There it is.
There it is.
Okay, thanks again for having me. Appreciate you all being patient while we get through our technology troubles here. Again, Radcliffe, Dak and I from SDOT in the Policy and Planning Group. We are just beginning to start our Low Pollution Neighborhoods work. And Greg and Megan talked a little bit about it, but I'll go into a little bit more detail. I have some context slides to share. Next slide, please. So we started this out with by signing onto a Green and Healthy Streets Declaration back in 2017, I believe, under interim Mayor Burgess. And we're among 35-plus cities who've signed on to this commitment. Next slide. And this commitment says that we would partner with the agencies in the Seattle area to procure buses that are electric by 2035 onward. But the key thing for us is the picture on the right there of delivering an area of the city that is emission, zero emission by 2030. Next slide. So we've been working on this quite a bit. And then when Mayor Harrell came on soon after, he had put out the executive order on transportation and climate justice. And in that, knowing that so many of our, so much of our emissions are coming from the transportation sector, over 60%, there's a little piece in there about doing pollution, low pollution neighborhoods. And now we go to the next slide, we'll have a little bit more detail on that. So yeah, invest in community resilience, plan for the creation of carbon-free, low-pollution neighborhoods. And let's go to the next slide and just want to focus on some of the words here. The low pollution, carbon-free, low-pollution neighborhoods. Next slide, I think this is really key with concepts like low emission zones, eco-districts, resilience districts, and superblocks. I think a lot of people have an idea of what low pollution neighborhoods is, but we're going to be borrowing from these ideas that have been around and see how we might implement from them. So I'll just go a quick overview of what these are and how they've been implemented in other parts of the world. Next slide, please. Low emission neighborhoods here. Here's an example, probably the most famous for all of us is the London version, where there's congestion pricing. This is a city in the UK as well, but a much smaller city, Dundee in Scotland. It's near St. Andrews. They don't charge a congestion price to get into this low emission zone. But what they do is they manage access into this area depending on how much emissions your vehicle is spewing out. So you do have to do some kind of registration, but it's essentially a way to manage access into a specific area of the city. Next slide, please. There's eco-districts. We do have a Capitol Hill eco-district, eco-district, and we've been talking to their group already, Donnie Moody. But this is, eco-districts has been, I'd say, a trademark term that this organization, Eco-Districts, put together about a dozen or so years ago, where if you kind of like lead the certification for neighborhoods. And they've just transitioned recently to what is now called Just Communities. And there's a whole process by which you would go through to achieve your eco-district status or your Just Communities status. So we'll be learning from them as well. Next slide. And then I think familiar to some of you is our resilience hubs work and in the Duamish Action, Duamish Valley Action Plan, looking at Georgetown and South Park together and how the city of Seattle can respond to the threats of climate change and how we integrate our development and improvements in this area to be able to address climate challenges now and coming up in the future. And then finally, next slide, I think. Can anyone guess where this is? No guess. Okay, this is a superblock in Barcelona in the neighborhood of Poblenu. This is probably among the first. And so again, the superblocks idea, we probably won't be doing something like this. But many people, when we talk to them, say, what about superblocks in Barcelona? So next slide. But we will be borrowing their concept or their model of how, again, we manage access into a low pollution neighborhood. And so it won't be, the current model is all cars have access into the area, a model that we're thinking of, next slide, please, where you would have more managed access into the interior of the neighborhood. So that there, instead of limited uses of the right-of-way, you've got more diverse and more, more uses and functions within the interior of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And then we have the Climate Change Response Framework. This was published in October of last year. And this informed the Seattle Transportation Plan and also, and then ultimately what's in the levy around our climate work. Next slide. And really, it highlighted our challenges again of how we need to reduce emissions in the transportation sector. Most of that is coming from cars and a lot of that is single occupancy travel. So people driving alone, creating a lot of those emissions. Next slide. How do we find ways to bend that curve? And here's an opportunity that we can take. Many of our trips are quite short in Seattle. And if we create our spaces and our streets to be safer, to be more friendly, many of these short trips could possibly be taken by walking, cycling, or taking the bus. And that's the ethos of our Low Pollution Neighborhoods work as well. Next slide. And so, you know, we were talking about outcomes in the last presentation. So potential outcome of putting all of our investments in climate, climate-related work can really change the profile of how we get around. Right now, well, from 2019 numbers, we still had a fair amount of travel being done by automobile. If we do this right, by 2030, we can have quite a decrease in car travel. There will still be car travel, but a lot of that shift will be in transit. So investing in our transit will help reduce emissions. And then also expanding on our cycling and walking. And then, of course, EVs will be playing a much larger role by 2030 and beyond as well. Next slide. Yeah, and all of this to say, this is, the intention is to bend the curve. So doing whatever we can to reduce emissions. We had a goal from our 2013 Climate Action Plan that said 82% by 2030. To be honest, we're not going to get there. But by doing some of the things that we've said we need to do in the CCRF and the Climate Change Response Framework and supported also by the levy, we can continue to bend that curve down closer towards our goal. We may not reach it in 2030, but we're going to keep on going and pressing forward. And by 2050, the ultimate goal is to be net zero by 2050. Next slide. And then lastly, we received a federal grant, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. They always come up with the best names. And this is great. It's a RACE grant. And it's just a seed to do this work. And we'll be, we're tasked to prepare a strategy by mid to late next year and an approach to implementation and then also funding opportunities. So if the levy passes, which we're eyeing that it will, we'll have some funding to begin implementing some of the work that will be coming out of this RACE grant work and the beginnings of our Low Pollution Neighborhood. Next. Yeah, so just some of the deliverables. We'll establish a vision and toolkit. We'll work with the community and what it means for different parts of the city. I think different communities have different ideas of what a low pollution neighborhood could be in their part of the city. So in the same process, we'll need to identify some candidate areas. We are tasked to do three. We're lucky enough, maybe we'll do more, but our focus right now is three sites by 2028. And we'll be working with those communities to define the projects and programs and what we need to do to deliver and co-create with them the low pollution neighborhood that's a perfect fit for their neighborhood. And then also think of how we would implement that, sort of the process, and then exploring funding opportunities as well. Next slide. All right, that was a lot of context, but wanted to, you all to have that. Take a breather here before I go into what is a low pollution neighborhood? Or should we just dive right in? All right. Next slide. What is a low pollution neighborhood? We've got this wonky definition here, a working definition. A lot of people put the wordsmithing to do this, but it's designating an area or a street in the city where we can, you know, pilot a variety of policy programs and interventions, incentives to reduce pollution and increase climate resiliency. Really, what that means for this program is from the tailpipe side, or at least on the SDOT side, we're going to encourage ways for people to travel by walking, by cycling, by transit. Again, the low emissions way of getting around. And the low pollution part of the title of this is, was intentional. We're partnering with the Office of Sustainability and Environment, and their contribution to this work will be to decarbonize the buildings within the neighborhoods. So helping property owners transition their appliances away from fossil fuel energy to cleaner energy. So getting electric stoves, their heating to be electric rather than dependent on natural gas. So simple as that, decarbonization in the building sector and then giving people in these neighborhoods more options to get around safely within their neighborhoods and between neighborhoods. Next slide. So we're doing some of these things already. And I think part of our challenge with Low Pollution Neighborhoods is to combine the ingredients so that we can frame a neighborhood and really sets the stage for a working area that has a lot of these elements. Oftentimes, we've shown pictures from Europe and, you know, we did show some pictures from Barcelona. We have been told by community, stop showing us that stuff. It'll never work here. But I think we do a lot of things that are similar to those areas. And these are all images taken here in Seattle. Next slide. And in Lake City, another example. So our approach is to really, first and foremost, work with the community, co-create what it means to deliver a low pollution neighborhood in their particular part of the city and get a sense of what really is important to the people in those neighborhoods and how we might connect them through safe pathways within the neighborhood and then also being able to extend beyond the neighborhood and get to places where they need to go likely by transit. And then the goal here ultimately is to improve air quality at the high level, opportunity to be more climate resilient, offer more opportunities to get around, and safety, increasing safety and community health. But also, as you see in a lot of these photos, it's about having fun and enjoying and getting a sense of belonging within our neighborhoods. Our streets, our right-of-way, aren't always for just moving ourselves or moving things. If done right, they can also be really important spaces where the community can program it the way they want and use those spaces for the things that they would like to do. And so we would be focusing, again, still on safety. It's really high priority for us and the community. But the outcomes of improved public health and certainly equity outcomes related to climate and cleaner air, people just being healthier overall, really a big part of the Low Pollution Neighborhoods ethos. Next slide. Promise we won't get into too many more boring slides here, but a chart of what we're doing over the next couple of years. We've had a little bit of hiccup in our start. So we're just now beginning our community conversations, this being one of them. And we'll transition that and by putting out our RACE grant and hiring some consultants to help us do the work with, engaging with the community and to be able to develop an essentially an action plan, implementation plan, and then a funding approach in 24, 2024 and 25. And then 2025 onwards, really begin to take the shape in the locations that we've selected of how we would be implementing and paying for those interventions in those parts of the city. And then delivered by 2028, completed Low Pollution Neighborhoods. Next slide. And then, again, this isn't really completely new, but we would be building on existing programs and opportunities that we have. The Home Zone Program, that was part of Reconnecting Seattle, really about slowing down cut-through traffic in neighborhoods. It's very akin to, again, managing the access and circulation within the neighborhood. And we have folks from that team who are core members of the Low Pollution Neighborhoods. And then local access only, this is the school, image of the school streets placards. So combining home zones with school streets, with Stay Healthy Streets, among other programs, I think we put all of these ingredients to really frame up a fully functioning Low Pollution Neighborhood. Next slide. And then opportunity, we call this opportunities 2.0. We've done a lot of things to reclaim some of our right-of-way space. How do we do better versions of them the next time around as we improve and implement or re-implement them in the neighborhoods as part of Low Pollution Neighborhoods? So Streeteries, I think the first time around, you know, we were just learning to do that when we were responding to the pandemic, using our streets for street festivals, how we might be able to reframe the space a little bit differently. And then we've got spaces where, you know, we have some, I would say, what we're calling raised tables or speed tables and how that even creates a sense of space within a district for people to gather and do things. So there's constantly these opportunities where we can just take them to the next level, the theme of continuous improvement on a lot of the things that we do. Next slide. And finally, I'll just close with this. There's, again, so many opportunities that we can build upon, things that we've done already in the city. And when we combine them properly, we can slow down and better manage the access into our neighborhoods and within our neighborhoods. So we do have a lot of examples. We don't necessarily need to look to Europe all the time, but we've got them here. Now, our, the trick is going to be putting them all together to make the best version of a low pollution neighborhood that we can. All right, I think that's it. Next slide, just a big thank you. If you have any questions, ideas, yeah, and you're welcome to reach me anytime if you do have any ideas to share. We'll be coming back to you again. And if it's possible to even maybe do a working session to hear some of your initial thoughts and comments on some of the work that will be coming out of this process. And so thank you so much.
Thank you, Radcliffe. We do have one question so far in the chat. If anybody else would like to, we have a second one. I hear a third. So Andy, I'd like to throw it over to you.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm coming from environmental health. So pollution is a range of air pollution, soil pollution, water pollution, noise pollution. So when you say low pollution, I'm assuming you mean mainly air pollution, but there might be a terminology that'd be clearer if that is what you mean.
Yeah, I think there, we've already received some comment on that sort of, what pollution are we addressing? Initially, it's, it has been focused on air pollution, but I think there's certainly an opportunity for us to look at all other kinds of pollution, from noise pollution to water runoff. I mean, our tires also pollute. And when it rains, that runoff goes into the waterways and has impact on our water. So I think there's something to be said for that. And we may just be expanding the scope to be looking at that as well.
Let's see. Next, we have DM.
Thank you, Radcliffe. So exciting to see this work and understanding that this is an evolving idea. And what a perfect time while bringing in together the comp plan, the levy, STP, all of those things. And this is just a perfect envelope for all those emerging ideas. And what a wonderful way to communicate it to the public and create excitement. So first, congratulations, and we really commend that, at least I do. I do think that, I did not hear mention about parking management in these low pollution zones. I just was curious if that was something that was being considered at this time, because I think probably one of the most powerful tools for these low pollution zones is to have an overlay of both on-street and off-street parking.
Right.
And measuring that in conjunction, in conjunction with low pollution zones. And so I was just curious if you could speak to how parking management is being thought about in these low pollution zones? And second to that is, seems like, just because it's like so, you know, exciting and at the same time overwhelming with all the goals, I was curious if there's a framework around prioritizing goals for the low pollution, like for these, you know, kind of like an outcomes and goals policy framework? Like, you know, it sounds like from just kind of almost telling how you were speaking to it, you know, right-of-way allocation is one of the, you know, main goals, mode shift, you know, emissions tracking is kind of like the first tier. Then there's kind of like a second tier of like place making and, you know, et cetera, right? Like buildings and stoves and, you know, all kinds of things that can be piled into that has SDOT been thinking about how to tier kind of like those outcomes and like what's most important to focus efforts around to just really truly define this program in terms of like, these are the main objectives. Then we have all these secondary ones that we want to pile on on. But would be excited to hear if parking is part of those primary ones.
Yes, I will. Short answer is yes and yes. Perfect timing when you ask that question. We are meeting, our team is meeting with our parking team, our parking experts, our residential parking zone folks, and to have them be involved in the process as well. How do we think about parking for these neighborhoods? Will we adjust? And how do we adjust if we're going to think about using some of our street spaces differently? That said, some of these outcomes and things that we are wanting to monitor and take a look at or prioritize, those are going to be set up in conversation with the community. So learning from the Just Communities process, we can present sort of a menu of what is it important, what is important to the community and what do they want to work on first? I think there are ways, there are many pathways to get to a certain outcome at the end of the day, but it will be based on how the community wants to move forward. And so that's our equity approach and co-creation approach with the community. We don't want to go in and say, here are all of the priorities and this is what we need to do to get there. But there's certainly a menu that we can pull from and say at the end of the day that these are the high-level things that we want to do, especially when we have the data showing in some parts of the city, there's just a lot more air pollution, nitrogen oxide and diesel, pollution from diesel relative to some other parts of the city.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. What is the sort of thinking around the scale of these neighborhoods? Is it, you know, is it like Wallingford? Is it bigger than that? Is it smaller than that? Like what's the, what's the sort of thinking about like how many acres or, you know? I'm just trying to get a sense. Three is not a lot relative to the number of neighborhoods I think of that Seattle has. But if it's North Seattle, West Seattle, and South Seattle, it sounds great.
Right. So we've done some, I would say cursory analysis of how big these might be. We've taken a playbook, you know, in a past life, I worked on 20-minute neighborhoods, 15-minute cities in another city. And we looked at it as, how do we think of walking districts? If you think of Paris and how they've got different quarters, their errand dozens numbered, you know, one through 20 and so forth. And similar to here, how do we break up the city in a way that is legible from a getting around by walking or cycling or even transit perspective? And that is going to help us define how big these spaces will be and the communities that we work in could help us. So that map that we saw of Duamish Valley that had Georgetown and South Park, I would say that could be pretty big. That might be the biggest low pollution neighborhood if we did that. But I have a feeling it might be tighter than that, given the resources that we have and how we want to make sure that we have it tight enough that it is workable, we can show some success and then be able to replicate that at different scales throughout the city. So, you know, our, our task is to deliver three, but I think the group working on this would love to do a really great job so that we go beyond three and figure out a way to expand this to more than three low pollution neighborhoods in the city.
Lauren?
Yeah, hi, Radcliffe. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's great to see how the thinking's evolved in this presentation. And I know that we would love to be collaborators with you, so we'll take you up on that work session offer if you want to get, you know, EDI. If you want to get, you know, Edie and Ian and others in here. Because I see this foray in really well, this new neighborhood center concept that we're seeing emerge in the comprehensive plan. And I know that you're aware of that. And then as we expand the denser parts of our city to be urban centers. And so kind of to echo Matt's comment around scale, you know, I was just kind of jotting things down. Everything from the scale of state healthy streets or those immediate streets around schools like Rick mentioned earlier, the kind of home zone concept for local travel to where is the kind of neighborhood square, if you will, in our neighborhood centers? Where is the place that we want to say like, cars don't belong here? You know, I would love to see places like Ballard Ave, Pike Pine, Third Ave,
Right.
Fourth Fifth and Wallingford. Like if you can imagine like the dense main streets of our neighborhood centers being places where people walk, roll, and there's an electric bus that comes by every 10 minutes. Like that's just, that's beautiful to me. I think one of the things that we pride ourselves on in Seattle, especially on days like today, is just the clean air and the clarity of days like today. And so just to think about being in our densest urban environments and enjoying that same quality, both of interaction and zero, zero emissions overall. I do have a question around how you're thinking about balancing the places that experience historically high levels of pollution due to environmental injustices and burdens. And this is the Duwamish Valley specifically. With the types of places that see the most emissions or the most trips and travel, these are our densest corridors like Third Avenue downtown or 15th and Ballard. So how are you thinking about balancing intervention so that we're not just like green gentrifying these neighborhoods that have experienced burdens in the past? And also, I mean, of course poking the political bear of those corridors that we know have the most trips and that hold the highest potential for pollution reduction.
I love it. You always ask the most challenging questions, but no, this is great.
Okay, I've been thinking about this a long time with you.
There's a lot of work that's already been done in the Duwamish Valley, as you saw with the resilience planning that they're doing there. It's not to say that we wouldn't do a low pollution neighborhood there. Maybe we would, because it lends itself to expanding on the work that's been done already. I think there's going to be a couple of options of how this plays out. There may be one candidate in the southern part of the city that's less urban, maybe another candidate in a more urban part of the city, perhaps in downtown or in Capitol Hill or Ballard even in one of the regional centers. And then perhaps another one in the north part of the city around light rail stations or along Aurora Boulevard. We want to be able to have sort of a initial template to build off of and then be able to scale beyond that. So I think the consultants that we do eventually hire are going to help us think through that. But we certainly have this notion of, you'd mentioned urban living room. How do we have that space that really connects the neighborhood to this is the space, whether it is a school that we improve the the street in front of it to be a much better school street 2.0, if you will, that we use some of the existing buildings that we have civic buildings to anchor the neighborhood and create that urban living room space. Or it could be an existing commercial strip or street, main street-like in the neighborhood. And how do we funnel activity to that area and have spaces that are friendly for people walking, people cycling, so that your, you know, young children would feel safe going to this again, urban living room and have those spaces bleed into then into the residential part of the neighborhood. So there are a lot, I think, a lot of different ways to see how this can evolve. And we want to be able to offer lots of different ingredients to the community and have, work with the community to shape how they would like to see that evolve in their part of the city.
We have about five more minutes and we have Julio and then Michaela. Julio?
Yes. Hello. First and foremost, I want to say that some of my questions have already been posed by other members of the commission. But I wanted to, first and second, I want to say that I am excited to know that perhaps in the near future, both Barcelona and Lake City Way might be mentioned in the same sentence. So that's an exciting thing to know.
You just did it.
Having, having said that, we are now thinking about Lake City, South Park, Georgetown. There are some, some issues that are hard to change or some situations that are hard to change. For example, in Lake City, we don't have as many green areas or healthy spaces for the community to congregate. In South Park, in Georgetown, we have tremendous amount of traffic through the freeways. So these are things which are real obstacles and that will need solutions that are perhaps beyond what we can envision in doing now. But I, so how do you see the reality conflicting with the painted vision? Do you have any feedback around that?
Yes, I will say Barcelona and in some ways Lake City, Seattle have already been talked about in the same sentence. The the organization that I borrowed the photo of Barcelona from, they've had some work on, they've been doing some work on gentrification on their own. And they've looked at Seattle as ways to mitigate gentrification in their city. So looking at the way we've zoned and so there are different ways to address all these problems, but I think it's really about creating this compelling vision for the neighborhood to keep wanting to take the next version of it. We're not going to stop at low pollution neighborhood 1.0. We're going to iterate on it, see how improve, continue to improve upon it and continue to find funding opportunities to take it to the best version of itself. So I don't think it's going to end with this first pass at delivering three low pollution neighborhoods in the city. We need to keep working on how we deliver these first phases and then continue to improve upon them and be able to address these much bigger issues that are hard to tackle. The freeways aren't going to go away immediately. The pollution wouldn't go away immediately too, but spending some time thinking about how we might do that, I think there are going to be a lot of solutions that the community can come up with, that we can explore how to fund them.
Great. Thank you so much for your response.
Michaela?
All right. Hi Radcliffe, Michaela. I used to work for the Capitol Eco District.
Right.
So I, you know, can't be more excited about this idea. I, I kind of feel like we're past the pilot phase, like communities have been experimenting with these models already. And when you start the presentation off with those charts about where we need the trajectory we need to get on to hit our 2030 goals, it, it concerns me that we're just picking three neighborhoods and we're going to work on those projects for several years. When we know that these models, we know that communities are experimenting and doing really wonderful things and we should be scaling those across Seattle and Seattle should be a low pollution city. So, but with that said, I know you're starting somewhere and I think it's fantastic. I've heard you use the word community again and again. And in order, so I did the Eco District certification program. I know, I know a lot about what works and what doesn't. And this has to be community driven. And there needs to be durable and continuous funding that is not going to disappear. And so to have it be in a pilot phase, I really would love to see the city make a very long-term commitment to this kind of program succeeding because it does take a lot of community-driven identification of priorities. They need to lead on this for anything to really succeed and be durable in the long term. So I would all love to have a work session with you and be a thought partner in it. And I could see you've got Sarah working with you on this program and she was a board member at the Eco District when I was there. So I know you've got some good expertise to tap into and, uh, yeah. Thank you for doing the work. I wish you were doing more of it.
Great. Thank you for that comment. I think funding is going to be always a challenge, but it's a challenge that we're willing to take on and figure out the, the many different ways that we could accomplish this. And there will be a funding task force as part of, you know, beyond the levy, how we again pay for more of these things and and that's going to be an ongoing conversation. It's, we can't just talk about the things that we wish for, but we also need to think through how we might be willing to to pay for them, to scale them up and accelerate our efforts in this work.
Thanks so much, Radcliffe. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, happy to be here. Thank you.
And Godspeed on the rest of the implementation of this project.
Yeah.
We have staff from Office of Planning and Community Development to join us to provide a briefing on proposed legislation regarding the conversion of office buildings into residential buildings. We have 40, no, we don't have 40 minutes. We have 29 minutes for this agenda item. That's your call. Rowan Hassan is here with us. If you could leave, you know, a few minutes for our inevitable questions and comments, that would be great.
Sure, of course, of course, I'll leave a lot of time for us to have a discussion and questions after the presentation. Let me share my screen.
If it looks a little strange to you, Rowan, just because of your view, just use the little stop sharing icon up in the top right corner and then you can go ahead. Yeah, there you go.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes. Put it into full screen.
Block people from camping and kind of like support and losing their parking.
So I want to start with talking about why we're focusing on conversions to residential. First, the vacancies in office space. The pandemic has accelerated the adoption of remote work and hybrid work models. This has led to changes in work culture, which has softened the demand for commercial office space compared to prior to the pandemic. And that had led to increasing Seattle office vacancy rate. It's around 25% of downtown Seattle now. And we want to avoid the long vacancy periods and its negative implications. Obviously, we need more housing. There is high demand on residential development. We are planning for over 110,000 more housing units as the job growth outspaced housing growth. And over a third of Seattle residents are housing coast burdened and increasing housing supply helps address the lack of affordable housing. We need more balanced use mix with housing in downtown and that has been a policy goal for Seattle for a long time. And we believe that the presence of residents within downtown would potentially revitalize business districts and downtown generally. And lastly, there is a strong support for conversions from the general public and all the people, our stakeholders and community that we meet with in our community meetings. There is a lot of efforts, both from the state and the city to support conversions. There is a lot of efforts from the state during 2023. The state legislature passed House Bill Number 1042. It amends the state's laws to create more housing units, removing some restrictions that are currently in place for adding dwelling units within existing structures. And like, like as a response to this state bill, the city of Seattle, like our office, Office of Planning and Community Development, has transmitted conversion to residential council bill number 120761 in response to the state bill, which includes regulatory and fee relief. During this year as well, State Bill 6175 passed the legislature. It encourages conversions to residential. It is a sale tax exemption and it requires participating conversions to provide 10% of the units at 80% AMI. It also requires the local jurisdiction to take an action to activate the exemption in their jurisdiction and we're working on this. In mid 2023, OPC conducted the call for ideas. It was a competition. We invited building owners and designers to submit their concepts for conversions. And the city also provides consultation and support for building owners who's interested in conversions through, like building owners, building officials, I mean, they're, they're like within STCI, they are available to work with owners on possible early guidance about construction codes, like both structural and energy code. And we're partnering with owners to support applications for federal financing opportunities made available by the Build America Bureau. And conversions is also part of the like vision and goals of the Downtown Activation Plan. OPCD called for ideas focused on converting commercial office spaces in downtown into residential uses. It was driven by a vision of downtown with a more balance between residential, civic and office spaces compared to its current state. We invited teams of downtown building owners and designers to submit their proposals for conversion to housing. And the teams were asked to submit designs, financial visibility information and commentary on major constraints or barriers to the conversion process. We received a total of 13 quality proposals. Each presented conversion ideas, designs, floor plans, financial visibility information, mix of housing types and affordability levels and suggestions for policy and code changes. This is one of the interesting proposals that we received. It's the Poulsen and Western Buildings. The proposal here proposed to transform the two temper-framed historic aged built structures and adding a new shared central courtyard in the middle, as you can see in the picture. And it proposes a mix of housing types, workforce housing and family units. This proposal aims to transform the floor plans of the iconic Pioneer Square Building Smith Tower to accommodate a diverse range of housing types including studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments and even three-bedroom apartments. In March, we transmitted to council a bill number 120761. Sorry for the numbers, but it's kind of long. So it's Housing to Conversion Bill. And we are presenting the bill to the city council and having a public hearing on June 5. This bill exempts conversion proposal, proposals from old development standards and design review in downtown commercial and mixed-use zones. And it's not just applying to existing structures. It also applies to new It also applies to new projects, like projects under construction and projects with MOPS that have not started construction yet. The proposal waives MHA requirements for conversions. But it's important to note that MHA exemption only applies to existing structures seeking conversions. This exemption does not apply to new construction projects. They still have to contribute to affordable housing according to MHA requirements that were in place at the time that the permitted projects became listed. Just one second, I need to turn something off. I'm sorry about that. It's the calls for prayers. Okay, I was talking about MHA requirements. So, yeah, new construction still have to pay MHA requirements based on the time they were listed. I want to quickly here talk about the policy basis of exempting existing structures seeking conversions from MHA requirements. First, a basic premise of MHA is that affordable housing requirements are associated with an increase in development capacity that provides an incentive to developers. In the case of conversions, the development capacity incentive would not be accessible to the developer. Second, on the basis, one of the bases of MHA is that new development has an impact on the need for affordable housing in the city, and MHA requirements mitigate such impact. In the case of conversions, however, the existing structure previously had a use that exerted an impact on housing. And, like, the new residential use would be replacing an old use and old one. So for these reasons, we believe that exemption from MHA is reasonable and does not violate cities' basic principles concerning contribution by new developments towards affordable housing. The picture to the right shows a new mixed-use tower on Third and Lenora. The owner intends to convert the office portion of the tower into housing. Okay, so I briefly talked about this before. This year, State Bill 6175 passed the legislature. It exempts construction sale tax on conversion developments. It also requires 10% of housing units to be affordable for 10 years at 80% AMI level. And it requires cities to enable the exemption with a local action. So currently, the city of Seattle is working on a resolution or an ordinance. We're still working on this with our partner departments, STCI, OH, and Utilities. And this picture is for a building that wants to seek conversion in Lower Queen Anne, and it wants to take advantage of the sales tax exemption. That's the end of my presentation, so let me know if you have any questions. I think I'll stop sharing this way. Okay?
Thanks so much. We have one question so far.
Hi, thanks for presenting on this. I, I'm like, not super current on how Seattle is thinking about this, but I feel like I know enough to be dangerous about how, like, office-to-residential conversions are being thought of writ large. And, and does the city have, like, a system for evaluating the viability of different office buildings downtown that are currently vacant for residential conversion? Because I know one of the problems is that historically, over time, our office floor plates have gotten so large that the types of residential units that you might be able to build suffer in terms of their quality with access to light and just, like, general layouts. And so I'm wondering how the city's thinking about, like, what buildings are well-suited to residential uses versus what developers want to do with buildings that they have sitting vacant?
Yeah, thank you for your question. It's important. I first want just to mention that conversions are complex and costly, and it takes substantial investment to modify structures. It, like, it needs, like, adding plumbing, walls, circulation, safety elements. And we are not anticipating seeing a lot of conversions. It will, this legislation would have small impacts. We're not expecting more than a dozen of conversions within the next seven years. And, like, this is based on, like, buildings in the market who showed interest in conversion and have discussions with the city. So building officials from STCI is having a lot of conversations with these, like, buildings who's interested in the conversion process. We're seeing how this can be doable, how city officials can help them make, like, some of the codes requirements, like, more flexible. So, yeah, I'd say, like, like, there is no clear system currently of how that would look like or would work. But it will be, like, operationalized by the STCI, like, on case-by-case conversion, or, like, building owners or developers who's interested in, in those conversions.
Anybody else have a question? I've forgotten one. Nobody does. So, did you have one?
The architects always have questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you?
Not yet.
I didn't mean to step on it.
No.
Well, I think, you know, one of the questions that I, I'm familiar with the competition, the commercial to residential competition, which was actually very successful, I think, both in terms of the number of submissions, the quality of the submissions. They were actually quite thorough. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what maybe some of the key takeaways were from that competition in terms of the city moving forward?
Sure. Like, from this competition, we realized a lot of stuff. We thought conversions were, like, a little bit easier. With these proposals, we realized that it's more complex and costly than we thought, which requires the city to, like, provide some, like, flexibilities, financial incentives, maybe streamline the permitting process. And a lot of construction code flexibility, this, like, this was a theme through most of the proposals that we got. A lot of them asked for flexibilities within the construction code. And we had multiple workshops after the, the competition with the winners, the three winners of the proposals, to talk about, like, some of these, like, construction code flexibilities. And that was run by our building officials within STCI. Another theme that we saw in this competition where that, like, older commercial, commercial structures are more favorable candidates for conversion. Many of the proposals were for historic structures from even the pre-war era. And they were, like, strong candidates because they're relatively smaller in their floor place. And, like, residential uses often, like, favor, like, you know, today's large-scale, like, office, like, tenants' place. And it's a way, like, to keep these, like, buildings, which most of them, like, are historic buildings. Yeah, and like, a lot of, like, a theme that we also see through these proposals that the city should streamline the permit process, both from, like, like, time, have, like, expedite process. And they, like, suggested skipping design review and CIPA. And a lot of them even suggested MHA requirements to be, like, waived. So we saw these themes throughout the 13 proposals, say.
Okay, thanks. I just have one comment. Our other architect has.
Yeah. While I'm very much a, you know, a use-all-the-tools-in-your toolkit kind of person, the focus on office-to-residential building conversions has, I don't know, has gotten a little bit too much buzz relative to the actual, I don't know, the, the actual ability for these projects to happen. You mentioned, what, 12 over seven years? So it's, or, yeah. And it, so it just feels like a bit of a drop in the bucket. I would rather, I, I would like to see a lot of this flexibility that's being granted. These conversions be applied to other, other projects that are more viable and have a, would have a greater, you know, a greater segment of, or, you know, more potential to actually happen. So, yeah, I don't know how I feel about this. I feel, I feel almost guilty in that some of these buildings are really unique properties that with the right developer and the right financing and the right people are going to be absolutely fantastic. But, but I just feel like it's going to happen, it's going to happen once or twice. And it's not really, you know, one of the legs of, of the sort of housing supply stool that we really need to support. It's really, like, you know, it's going to be a one-off.
Also, it's going to be affordable.
And they're, yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's not a, yeah.
I think there's one, one state bill that I was reading that she mentioned that says 10% of the, it's a tax deferral for 10 years, and I think 10% of the units have to be affordable for that period of time. So it's very short.
Yeah.
And so, like, and if it was any more, it would be also a killer.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right? Michaela has a comment?
Just wanted to, because we're in person, we can actually have a discussion. I just wanted to say that.
We'll manage discussion, okay?
Yes. What Matt said, less money. Sorry, Rowan.
No worries. I'm trying to follow up.
Anything else? Any other observations? Vanessa has a question.
Matt, I'm interested to hear a little bit more when you say you'd like to see the flexibility extended to other proposals. Specifically, what kind of flexibility are you talking about? And would that be beyond just where you find vacant office buildings?
To do with 1.2 FAR?
No, no, I think, I think having a, having a shift to something that looks like MFTE instead of MHA, you know, where right now MFTE is, is based on, you know, both, you know, depending what, you know, 40 or 60% AMI and higher percentages, and those are quite difficult to achieve. And I would, so I would love to be able to, you know, have flexibility, like, between, being able to pick MHA versus MFTE, different sort of pathways to affordability for multifamily projects. I think that would be, that would be a helpful, yeah, helpful element. And I think that in general, we're probably at a point where we could critique MHA in general, which is something I would love to plan and commission to weigh in on at some point, not just because at this point we have, you know, five, six years of track record.
MFTE and MHA are very different. They create very different types of affordable housing and for very different periods of time.
Yeah.
Because MHA is a very short-term affordability, sorry, MFTE is a very short-term affordability as opposed to MHA, which, you know, has a D or so year covenants placed on it. So it would be a.
MFTE isn't that D?
Right, right, right. I think, yes, exactly. It would be a discussion of that, and you may be in a different setting.
Rick? I, I think the discussion of affordable housing as it relates to these projects is an interesting one, but I think the reality is this has nothing to do with affordable house.
Yeah.
This has to do with revitalizing downtown. Your, your point still stands, Matt, which is, is it going to have enough of an impact quickly enough to do what it's intended to do? And while it would be great to have folks from a range of incomes moving into downtown, I think the, the sense of the, the immediacy of the situation is such that we'll take anyone who will move downtown. And with that, I believe that's the last word for today. Vanessa, do you have anything to?
Thanks, Rowan.
Thanks, real.
Thanks, Rowan.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for tagging us.
Sure, thank you for having me.
Yeah, I should note that I only asked Rowan on Tuesday if she could present.
Great work.
Talk about a trooper, yeah.
Thanks again. And with that, we are adjourned.
So I'm sure some of the flexibility.